Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, May 15, 2017. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the City Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda and we have the deletion and that would be the first reading of the ordinance. It's not prepared for consideration at this time and so we would delete that item from the agenda with the approval of the agenda. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the agenda with that deletion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Can we add to the agenda under the consent agenda, travel expenses to the League of Minnesota Cities? Has that already been taken care of? I don't think it has for their summer annual conference.
We did that.
Okay, I'm sorry to miss that.
Yeah.
Further discussion. Are there none questions?
Aye.
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 Well, yes, motion is carried and agenda is approved with the deletion. Thank you. Move to the approval of the minutes of the May 1, 2017 regular city council meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve as presented.
One second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion is carried and minutes are approved. Thank you. We move to the resolution on transfers and payment of claims. We have three transfers, two Fund Number 101, the general fund, from Water and Sewer Fund, $18,285, to Fund Number 401, Permanent Improvement Fund, from the Water and Sewer Fund, $25,000, and to the Reserve for Capital Outlay, 403, from the Water and Sewer Fund, $17,428. We have accounts payable claims of City of International Falls, $324,771.56; Airport Commission claims of $12,044.35; and Library Board claims of $5,704.90. Pleasure with the resolution to approve the transfers and accounts payable claims.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we do those transfers and approve the claims.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to adopt the resolution approving the transfers and the payment of the accounts payable claims. Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the resolution or the transfers and claims. Are there none question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, approving the transfers and the payment of claims. Thank you. Go to the audience and anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time that's not on the agenda. Mayor Wagner?
Yes.
You want to come up and join us up here, please?
Thank you for letting me speak here. Our city council was, Rainier was approached by a couple service committees, the Rotary and Rainier Rec, about a proposed splash park in Rainier. And after discussion with the council, we thought it might be a much better spot if we could put it in City Beach. And we have a small piece of land that belongs to the City of Rainier adjacent to your property there and I thought it might be a good joint effort because if we were to put it in Rainier, we'd have to, you know, turn the water on, shut the water off. And right now, they're just seeking permission for a place to put it. They have not decided yet a design. The design would be basically subject to how much money they can raise. And they're only about 40 by 40, 50 by 50, so they're not a large thing. But they're getting quite popular. There's 37 of them in the state right now and Roseau's been the last one to get one that I know of. But anyway, I thought it'd be a good project that we could maybe collaborate on, work together with it. I do want to say that there's a double concern that whenever these service committees come to us and ask us to support them and their actions of what they want to do unless it's something that's going to fall flat in their face and cost the city and anybody else a lot of money, I certainly encourage that. I know it don't always fit everybody's bill, you know, a splash park, I may not be using it, but I know the grandchildren will. So I like to encourage things like that and I think it'd be a great project that I think we could collaborate on and make it successful and be useful. And right now, they're just seeking, like I said, design and apparently they got some means for some grants and some other deals. Somewhere between, you know, they range in price somewhere between 75 up to 250,000, you know, the high end one. So they haven't settled on any of that. They're just looking right now for, to keep moving ahead, keep forward on this. And so, that's about it.
Mayor Wagner and I spent time together on Friday and I thought it'd be something to bring to the attention of the council, to possibly consider a joint project with the City of Rainier and these organizations. And that splash park, while we do have the beach right there, sometimes a less amount of water, people feel safer, you know, children splashing around in it. And so I think it's certainly one to consider.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
This was an idea that actually your wife brought to us a number of years ago now. We looked at the cost with the idea of locating it in between the library and the City Hall. And that appealed to me because it would bring people to the downtown area and, you know, sometimes it's difficult for families to get out to City Beach, you know, and it would provide an attraction to our downtown area. So we were looking at that and the cost was one item that prevented it. And then secondly, we were concerned about the liability. But I'm glad to hear that there are people in Rainier that are interested in creating that.
Yeah, one thing about it too, the cost, of course, that's, like I said, that's what they have for cost right now. They did have a maintenance cost roughly, it was very, between $1,100 and $2,100. And probably most of that is just the startup and put away in the winter, you know, in the spring and winter. And I know if it was located in Rainier, we'd have our guy do it anyway. So I don't see us not performing that task. What made City Beach attractive was, you know, the changing room, of course, and obviously city water parking, things like that. We had considered our park, but, you know, we're going to have to do some expansion of our parking lot area there. And then, of course, there's no changing room. So with all that discussion, and like you say, here, I don't know whether, maybe band shows, I suppose that would be an idea. I think what they were really looking for is an area to do it in, so they approached us. I don't think they would object to any site, to be honest with you. I could bring that back to them. But I, basically, this here, can we move ahead? Once we have a site, we can move ahead and do the particulars on it. Of course, the city would hold the final, you know, look at it, here's the proposals for what it is. But maybe they should just be coming talking to you direct in the city here. But again, if it was to be at City Beach, we'd more than love to work with the City of International Falls on that.
That's an attractive option too, to be partnering with Rainier. In my mind, I also am sort of jealous about promoting our downtown area too.
Understandable. I mean, I'd like to have it too, but, you know, at the same time, we're pretty much joined at the hip on these things like that. So as long as somebody does it and can move ahead. And again, you know, these little flower clubs and Rotary Clubs and all these things come to you and they're putting a lot of effort and time into it. Rainier Rec has been our, you know, go-to guy, so to speak. So unless we see a disaster on the horizon from it, you know, I think it's, we have to support these things, you know. And it didn't sound like they were asking for any money or anything, just, and they weren't. They weren't asking for any money. They just wanted notice to proceed. But maybe what they should do then, and I'm going to ask them to come to the council meeting tomorrow, because we said we have some kind of answer for them, and I already talked to Bob on this, so maybe I'll see if, maybe they would come and consider the band show area or something like that too. They have no particulars on where they put it as far as I'm concerned, as long as, you know, what's best suited, so.
I appreciate the energy there and I think we should pursue it regardless of where it goes. It's a great idea.
Yep.
I saw the diagrams that Nancy Sherman brought to the city council a number of years ago and it's conducive to having small children, you know, play.
Well, I think then, I think when they show up tomorrow, I think I'll just say them that either the city or Rainier or both are more than willing to find them a site and, again, let them start proceeding with all that then. If that's all right with everybody, that'd be the message I'll bring to them.
Other questions for Mayor Wagner?
Thank you for bringing that.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
I'll relay that message and then they may contact you or, we'll get back to you on it.
We'll work together. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council that's not on the agenda? Another opportunity at the end of the meeting for that? Now we'll move to, excuse me, to new business. Item number one is a resolution approving the application and permit for a one to four day temporary on sale liquor license for the Rotary Club at Smokey Bear Park for July 3rd and 4th celebration. Move on to resolution. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the resolution. Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and permit is granted. Thank you. Item number 200, new business, is to acknowledge a development agreement between Richard and Mary Roach and the Kooching Economic Development Authority and approve and authorize the mayor and the city administrator to execute Exhibit A, a quick claim deed conveying Lot 1, Block 2, plat of International Falls Business Park to the Roaches. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the agreement. Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the agreement.
You'll have to clarify for me what parcel this is.
This is a parcel that you've already secured from KETA.
Yep.
But the city, the city has a, the city administrator, let me ask you to explain exactly what our position is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The agreement has already been executed between KETA and Mr. Roach and, I believe, his mother. And the property, the plat for the property for the industrial International Falls Business Park includes KETA and the City of International Falls as owner in the general language. And so this particular exhibit, as part of the original agreement, is just getting the city's signature on conveying the parcel to Mr. Roach and it's Lot 1, Block 2. And I did include in the packet, it's not really part of the agreement, but you can see the Lot 1, Block 2 in the back here and it would be the northeasternmost lot on the site.
So what is this property? I still don't know.
It's a vacant lot that's just been conveyed to him and he's doing some site grading and going to build a building on it.
Where is it?
Behind the Falls Motel, where the old fishery was.
That's what I said.
Behind there. It's just a piece of property though, it's not buildings.
The very back end.
Okay. Didn't we look at that together one day? No? Nope? Okay.
Further questions or discussions with regard to the agreement, the property, and the city's conveyance? Question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion is carried, agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number three is to approve the 2017 camp host for the City Beach. City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have received an application from Rebecca Hausmann, who is interested in serving as a camp host for the months of July and August. We had met with the City Beach Committee about a month ago and had approved hiring another couple that could also serve as camp hosts. And in contacting them, they had already accepted a position that was in Wisconsin or Michigan, so were not able to participate as camp hosts. And so what we did is we advertised again in the Journal. I received one phone call from a gentleman from Big Falls, but we've received no applications and the application deadline was noon today. So as of right now, we don't have anybody set up to serve as camp host between Memorial Week and the beginning of July. But I'd be seeking the council's authorization to authorize Rebecca Hausmann to serve for the months of July and close to the end of August. And she did serve the same time span last year. So it would be, just asking for a motion to approve for her as post.
Is this her second or third year?
This will be her third.
I know she did it for sure last year.
Last two years.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the camp hosts and will continue to have the position from Memorial Day till July open, should someone apply.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Question on the motion or the camp host?
Wondering if we're not competitive or we need to do more to attract people? Is there, is there something we're missing?
You know, I really don't know what the answer is to that. I mean, it's a very attractive site. It's, you know, who wouldn't like lake frontage on Rainy, Rainy Lake in the summer months? But for some reason, we just haven't been able to generate a ton of interest in it. I think it's not atypical to have camp hosts that get free use of the facilities, but they're not necessarily paid to do it. Particularly, this site only has six campsites. So just ask them to lock the gates and open them in the morning, lock them up at night again, and do some general maintenance and cleanup in the restroom facilities. So it's a relatively easy thing to do and people enjoy it. This first couple that wanted to do it, really wanted to do it, they approached us back in February, it's just that this other commitment came up before we could approve moving forward with them. And so they took that one because it was a bird in hand, if you will. So I don't know what else to do to try and attract interest. I did indicate, like I said, somebody from Big Falls had called and had a great interest in serving and he just, he never came back with an application. I spoke with him on the phone.
These primarily RV owners that end up taking this, yeah, okay. Maybe some RV association.
Three years ago, we advertised quite broadly in RV magazines and stuff like that. We just didn't generate a lot of interest. I don't, I don't know why.
Further questions or discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion is carried and camp hosts are approved for at least part of the summer. Thank you. Item number four under new business, two recommendations from the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. The first is the property owners, a property owner has requested that the city administration would send out a petition and letter to the property owners on 8th Avenue East between 19th Street and 20th and a half Street to determine if a majority of the public, if the citizens there would like to have a utility improvements and the road improved. And so a motion would be in order to authorize that letter and petition.
Select that motion.
Motion by Counselor Drowba. Second by Counselor Pearson. Questions or discussion?
How many residents live in that area?
Probably about seven, I think. Six or seven.
I'm thinking one of the areas that really does need improvement is that trailer park behind Waschke's. That's dirt road back there too, but that won't affect this, it won't cover it.
Probably 1st or 2nd Avenue West is that, would be that street.
Yeah, you're right, it would be, yeah.
And I think it's probably all one owner because I think they lease out those lots for the trailer park. I'm not sure who the owner is.
The people there are living in mud.
Does need improvement. Whether the property owner would be interested in paying the assessments is the question.
As part of this project, if we undertake it, would it be?
We have, we have another letter and petition out and that's on 6th Avenue East between 17th Street and 20th Street. So that one is already out and I think most of those petitions are back in at this point. Further questions or discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion is carried and administration will be sending out the letter and petition to the property owners on 8th Avenue East. Thank you. The second item under the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendations is a purchase of a 2018 Kenworth T440, single axle, 46,000 pound GBW chassis cab from the state bid list for $97,444, monies to come from the reserve for capital outlay.
About the two items in separate?
Yes.
Okay. But I'll make the motion on the first piece of equipment.
By Counselor Drowba to approve the purchase of the 2018 Kenworth under item B. Second by Counselor Pearson. Questions or discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion is carried and purchase is approved. Thank you. Item C, then is the, would go with that chassis and this would be the purchase of a 2017 Vector Plus combination machine that does sewer vacuuming from McQueen Equipment for the, from the state bid list at the purchase price of $283,555, including the trade-in value of the 1997 Ford sewer cleaning truck. This also would come from the reserve for capital outlay. Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Well, second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Questions or discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion is carried and purchase is approved. Thank you. The street department is also, this is a recommendation from the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, that the street department is requesting the purchase of a trailer to transport lawn mowers. Right now, the large lawn mowers have been being driven around the city and we think that it would be advantageous to have a trailer to transport them. And so the recommendation is to purchase a trailer not to exceed $4,200, also payable from the reserve for capital outlay.
Mayor, motion.
Motion by Counselor Drowba. Second by Counselor Pearson to approve the purchase. Questions or discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, motion is carried and purchase is approved. Thank you. Item number E under four, under the recommendations from the Public Works and Infrastructure, is to approve the purchase and replacement of three sections of non-compliant bleachers at Rizzo Field and 11th Street for a fee of not to exceed $2,800 per section, plus the additional shipping and payable from the Parks and Recreation Fund.
I'll make that.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to make the purchase of those three sections of bleachers. Second by Counselor Pearson. Questions or discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 Oops.
Although, yes, motion is carried and the purchase of the three sections of bleachers is approved. Thank you. Item number five is to license registration for religious exemption to display literature by the Jehovah's Witness at the Centennial Park and the City Beach. And that's just information, that's not a council action.
Yes, correct, Mr. Mayor. The, I thought it appropriate to put it on the agenda because Mr. Whiteford had contacted me and said that they didn't get an opportunity to do it last fall when we had approved this and so it'll be new to see them out here this spring and they thought they were going to maybe be here as early as this past weekend. And just because it's something unusual that we haven't seen before, it was just for council's information, just so you know that they're going to try and show up on several of these weekends and promote some of their literature at those two locations. So I was just letting the council and the public know as well. If they see them, that's what it's about.
Thank you. Any other, excuse me.
I just have, if I may, I just have a question. I'm fine with it, but like for Centennial Park, if we're doing special events in our community, like when the Elks does their brat feed and when we do crazy days, are they able to set up in that same area for the special events that we have in our community as well, under this license?
This was actually a registration for religious exemption, so it's not necessarily a license, it's just acknowledging that they have an exemption as a, because of their religious affiliation and for complete transparency and just to inform the public, if people had questions about it, that's why we did it this way, so.
I see where you're coming from, though. I think it would be intrusive to have them in Centennial Park and proselytizing on a day when we've got other events there. People are paying for space.
But again, it's a public place too, so I get it.
Well, maybe they'll demonstrate good taste.
They were there last weekend.
Yeah.
Any other business under the new business? We'll go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator.
I don't have a report today, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Couple of things. One, met with Kelly this morning for an extended period and we're going to work on a number of blight issues. There's about a half a dozen high priority items that we should have reports back to the council soon on, on those properties. And then another item, it was initially on the agenda, but we took it off, working with the committee, Councilman Briggs, Councilman Pearson, and Administrator Anderson. We do have proposed language for an ordinance on the liquor to totally replace our existing ordinance and have a new ordinance that in most respects is like the model ordinance that the League of Minnesota Cities suggests. The reason we didn't present the first reading today is there's some discussion that perhaps the legislature is going to tweak or alter their Sunday liquor law and they're going to be in session for another week, so we thought we'd wait. We can still get the two readings in in June. If we can still get the two readings in in June, it would be effective in July, so work is done, we're just kind of waiting for the, so we can have the correct language for the Sunday liquor aspect of it. But it'll be a totally new ordinance to replace the existing ordinance.
Anything else I have? Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Questions for the City Attorney?
I have one, Steve. A property owner that we had, I believe, taken action against in court, did not show up.
Eric, yes. There was a property that we actually took down over a year ago, and they had, were claiming, first this property owner went to see an attorney in the Twin Cities, who we got some communication from, that after some investigation, that attorney declined to represent her. So then she brought a claim in small claims court, and we were supposed to have a hearing last Friday. She failed to appear, so it was dismissed against her with prejudice. So, case is over, and very confident we would have prevailed had she appeared anyway because we followed all the proper procedures, and so that, there are no demands on that one any further. The ones we're dealing with today are new ones, although two of them, we actually have orders from the council on, but because of difficulties with service of process and so forth, haven't been removed yet, but we're in the process of getting that accomplished.
Thank you. Again, further questions for the City Attorney?
I have.
Councilor Jackson?
I want to raise the issue of the one, the very difficult nut.
You and I have spoken about that, and that's in the process.
Okay, because we're meeting tomorrow and, about the cleanup, and if there's something we can do.
I'm hopeful that he will volunteer to cooperate and help you clean up.
When I said not, I mean, not of a case. I didn't mean it. That's what I was referring to. So, you know, just to be clear.
I'm okay.
Okay, so, would you meet with us tomorrow, or what, how can we proceed on this, so we know how we can?
Well, I'll, if I have commitment from him by then, until I get a commitment from him.
All right.
There's nothing we can do without a commitment from him.
Appreciate your attention to those blighted issues, they are very much a priority in this community. Thank you. Keith Maston?
I have no problems with that.
Oh, was the fishing?
Looks good.
Very good.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
That was a diplomatic way of saying you didn't catch anything.
That was opening weekend of fishing, you've got to ask that question to somebody. Thank you. Go to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
The City Administrator, did we get in touch with auditors so that we can have a?
I have, I do not have a firm date yet, but I will contact you. I think where we left it was is that when we got some word about when it would be completed, and it was sent to us, that you and I would coordinate to try and set a date for the Budget and Finance Committee to meet and review that and have a conference call with them at that time. Hopefully, still by, before the end of the month.
And along that line, we're going to be looking at budgets soon. We have that thirty-six-hundred dollar annual expenditure for a health officer, and I asked, which has no value for us, but it's required by charter, so I asked Adam if we were going to have another charter meeting, and he said he's waiting for an illegal opinion on changing the charter. We need a legal opinion to eliminate the health officer requirement in the charter.
I wasn't aware that he was awaiting that from me, but I'll, I'll get in touch with him tomorrow.
He just said that to me today, so I was following up on that.
I'll get in touch with him in the morning.
Thank you, Steve. Then another issue I have is, by the way, the garbage, the neighborly cleanup is tomorrow at four o'clock in here, so anybody who's interested in attending, so that's scheduled for June seventeenth, and we'll be sending out on the next water billing a notice and flyers. But the other thing I want to mention is, I've had complaints about the sound, a couple things. I've had complaints about sound on this room for the videos that are played on KCTV because of our sound system. When you pull away from the mic, you can't hear. The other thing is that when people speak from the audience, people watching the video can't hear. And there's quite a few people that are actually watching the meeting. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, if we could be more cognizant of speaking into the mic, and secondly, if audience members could come to the mic, then when the video's replayed, people will hear both sides of the conversation. Secondly, Aspen Way has been asking for charter, for midco service for quite a while, and I think they don't have the density under the contract to get it unless they pay six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars per household to get it. So, I'm trying to talk to them, right, and see if they can reduce it anyway, and so that those people that live in that area who really want it, there's five homes, I think it has to be six. And it is in our contract, I do believe, I have to check that. But it seems to me, my opinion, the average cable bill is sixty dollars. It would seem to me that your payback period isn't too long to make an investment of some sort in that neighborhood, but, you know.
How many homes want?
I think there's five in that neighborhood.
There's six.
There's six?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. Yeah, there's six, and how many do you have to have to?
I think it's six.
So, everyone on the block would have to jump in?
I think everybody does. So, I'll have to review that, but I want to bring it to your attention that we have a couple of issues with.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further, under Council Committees, Boards, and Commissions?
Bring to your attention the mayor's report, and that's in writing there before you, and then, secondly, at each of your places is a copy of a resolution that I would propose to the North Kooching Sanitary District at its meeting tomorrow with regard to discontinuing the maintenance contract with the East Kooching area. And primary reasons for bringing that resolution is that I'm not certain that there's any way to determine whether or not the City of International Falls, who's, we are paying about ninety percent of the costs of the North Kooching operation, whether or not we're subsidizing that East Kooching operation. I'm not contending that we are, but I don't know that we are or aren't. I would like to see the City of Rainier, the City of International Falls, and East Kooch all on the same level, and all being collectors and contributing to the sewage treatment operation. And that's primarily what the North Kooching Sanitary District was organized, was to treat the sewage and not act as a collector. And so, it would be my intention to bring that resolution to the North Kooching meeting, and hopefully can, through a period of time, and again, this is just a proposed resolution, it's not, nothing in here that's hard and fast, certainly willing to have discussions with the board there, and hopefully we can come to some resolution. The other issue that I guess I would bring to your attention is the fact that right now, the North Kooching District is, received a letter from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and they are concerned that once or twice a year, the, there is a overflow, and they believe it's being caused, it's overflow of the, of the treatment system, and that it's being caused by inflow and infiltration. And so, it's going to be necessary for North Kooch to reach agreement with each of the entities. And I think it makes it more difficult if North Kooch is representing one of the agent, one of the areas, and so, I know that it's going to require the City of International Falls to have a engineering firm and have the city attorney involved in meeting with the North Kooch District with regard to an agreement on how we go forward on the inflow and infiltration issue. So, that's something that'll be coming to, to the council. The Public Works and Infrastructure Committee were aware that, and the Public Works Director, Gary Skolman, has engaged the services of Woodside Smith and Alting, and they will be placing thirty flow meters throughout the city and three rain gauges to see if we can determine where we might be getting inflow and infiltration. We know that there are some homes that are hooked up, their, their drain water coming off their homes and yards is going into the sanitary system. We may have lines, collection lines, that are having water infiltrated, or catch basins, and so, there's a, there's a number of areas that we need to, to explore, and so, that will be happening over the next month or six weeks.
This has been a festering issue, and we need to get to the bottom of it, so I'm glad you're doing this. I applaud the metering, and, yeah, my contention has been for quite a while that the very construct of the sewer district agreement discriminates against the ratepayers of International Falls, because all of the costs are billed on a volume basis, and if you look, look at where the growth is and where the hookups are happening, we allocate nothing by fixed cost for hookups, like we do with water, in town. So, you know, as that, if you put one more person out in the East Kooch Sewer District, it doesn't really increase the volume substantially, another hookup. So, you know, I think right now it's seventy-five, twenty-five, but yet we're paying ninety percent of the volume, so, and that cost, so that's, that's been one of my issues for quite a while, and I don't know how we revamp that. It's a very difficult thing to do because it needs to go through the state legislature, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, City Attorney?
Because I've been involved with the creation, back when North Kooch and East Kooch were all created, and the thinking behind doing it the way they have is that North Kooch had some permanent staff working on a daily basis that can perform different maintenance-type issues, whereas the volume that would be required for maintenance in East Kooch would not warrant a full-time individual to take care of those things. So, what they attempted to do was build in, I mean, part of the treatment cost that's assessed each month to the, all the homeowners in East Kooch, a portion of that is for maintenance because they know North Kooch is maintaining those things, and, you know, whether or not they've been charged enough, and if they have some records of what their maintenance costs have been in, in East Kooch versus, you know, what they've been reimbursed, I don't know the details of that, but I do know the theory behind it was that it would make more economic sense for everybody if North Kooch hired the staff and East Kooch helped pay for it. But maybe the formula needs tweaking, and, and I don't know if the, as the East Kooch has grown, maybe it does reach a point where it would justify a full-time maintenance staff personnel. I just don't know how much maintenance has been required. I don't think there's been a lot, although there was, when the flood was here, I know there was a significant issue for several weeks that was, I think, in the East Kooch area, that, you know, there was some disagreements on how that should be handled and paid for and so forth. That's the only extraordinary maintenance issue that I've been aware of, you know, between the two groups. Certainly, needs to be fair to everybody.
Please, Councilor Droba.
I spoke to the director out there, Cindy Strand, about this very issue, probably about two, three weeks ago, and she said that it's definitely what, what the city attorney was speaking of, that that's why they set it up in placement, because there are days where there's no work being done in East Kooch, there's other days that there's lots of work that needs to be done in East Kooch, and it balances out pretty well. Now, if the, the numbers need, or the money needs to be higher, I mean, that's one thing, but what you just spoke to with the MPCA and how we have to change, and everyone has to be accountable for their own areas, that's the first time I've heard something that says, yeah, maybe it is time to change the formula, because the people, the use is getting out there by North Kooch, they have people going out there and doing good work, and I, I get that, but maybe now with everyone needing to take care of their own area, it makes sense to kind of change the formula to something like this. And if, if they continue getting the sewer system going farther out, it's going to cause maybe more need as well, so.
Thank you, Councilor Droba. I think that, and that's another reason, and I failed to mention that, is that the plan to expand the East Kooch District with additional clients, and the discussion at the sewer district is that they need to hire an additional employee. Well, you know, so then, then you're carrying a number of employees just in case they need someone to do maintenance, and, you know, just in case gets to be an issue. It's like us, if we were to, to say to a contractor, well, we'll pay you when we need you, but you carry the people, and if you don't have any work, why, you know, you, you just keep paying, and then we'll pay you when we need it. And I think that's part of the issue here. I know that they pay for some time every month, but then there's, how much more time is needed, and how many employees do they really need at the, the district, the treatment plant, to operate that plant?
In order to analyze that and really take a look, you almost need an auditor to come in and analyze the costs, I, you know. So.
If we had started hiring additional employees, I mean, this thing is just going to continue to grow. And I think you raise a, a good point about the fact that the City of International Falls is based on, on a purchase, water purchase and flow, and folks in the East Kooch pay a flat rate, no matter how much they generate. So, I, it's, it's a very confusing situation. So, I will be introducing that, and with more to come on that, I'm sure.
I've been analyzing to this point that I know that the city ratepayers are paying more. I know that, but it's been a while since I've crunched the numbers, so.
Further, under Boards and Commissions? Go to the audience, anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this Correspondence is in the packet. Reminder that our next city council meeting is Monday, June the fifth, so there'll be three weeks between now and the next meeting. And following this meeting is the Economic Development Authority meeting. With that, withstand adjourned. Thank you.